Good evening and welcome to the candidates for Milburn Board of Education and the attendees at this candidates forum jointly sponsored by the South Mountain Civic Association and the West Hobart Neighborhood Association. My name is Sarah Sherman and I am president of the South Mountain Civic Association, a 100-year-old neighborhood group that advocates for its residents and promotes civic engagement. We look forward to hearing an informative and substantive presentation from the candidates for Milburn Board of Ed. Jorge?
Good afternoon and thank you everybody for being here. You took some time from your busy schedule to be part of this forum. And thank you everybody else for being part of this event. My name is Jorge Mastro Pietro and the co-president of the West Hobart Neighborhood Association. We are a very new association, still in formation, whose objective is to build community and civic engagement with our neighbors. We hope this event will help the residents to get to know each candidate so you can make a decision who you want to represent us for the next three years in the Board of Education. Before we start, I would like to describe the format of tonight's event. This is a forum, not a debate. We will start with an introduction by candidate followed by questions and then closing statements. We have prepared two questions in advance and share them with the candidates. We will start with one of the prepared questions. All the candidates will be given two minutes to answer. Then we have our lightning round. We will ask four questions submitted by the audience. We received many, many questions and we did our best to summarize them. In order to cover more topics, each question will be answered by only four of the eight candidates and each candidate will have one minute to answer. We will finish with the second prepared question. All candidates will be given two minutes to speak. For each question, the timer will be visible on the screen. We will change the order of the candidate for each question so as to give every candidate equal time to speak. Moderators may request additional information to clarify your position or sources of information. So let's begin. I would like to ask each candidate to introduce themselves and tell us what you hope to accomplish as a member of the Board of Education. As I said before, you each have up to two minutes. Let's start with Crystal. Crystal, your turn. You are muted.
Hello, everyone. I'm Crystal Adams and I've lived in Milburn for over 13 years with my husband and two children who are now in the ninth and 10th grade. I've spent years volunteering for class trips, art appreciation, and even taught an after-school dance class. I've coached my kids' rec basketball team. I've been on the CETA committee and I'm currently on the Bike Walk Committee. I'm running for Board of Education for several reasons, one including stress. Stress has plagued our youth from COVID, school, and just life. And I want to help equip our kids with tools to cope and strive in and out of school. In 2017, I collaborated with the Dent Assistant Superintendent Kyle Arlington on ways to address racial literacy, cultural awareness, sensitivity training, inclusivity in curriculum, diversity in book choices, hiring practices, and more. It has been my passion to have diverse voices and stories be told in our schools. I want to continue the difficult yet rewarding work. And finally, the arts. I'm an actress and writer. I also sing, direct choreograph, paint, and more. So needless to say, I am a fan of the arts. It's been proven that students who have art in their education do better than in other areas of academics. And I also want to, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, and they also can do well in their SAT scores. I want the performing arts and the fine arts to be there so they can express themselves. I also want to present the idea of an art therapist to help children cope with stress. These are just some of my ideas for giving our students a multi-dimensional academic experience. So vote for me so we can have our children not just survive, but thrive in Milburn. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Monisha, it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Monisha Amaral. I'm a mother of three boys in the Milburn School System in elementary and middle school. I've lived in Milburn for 11 years and part of several PTO committees in Glenwood and the middle school soccer club, the Milburn Soccer Club, Boy Scouts, robotics clubs, and a lot of social service clubs. I've studied in three continents across the world, so I bring a global perspective to the board. My undergraduate degree is in computer engineering and a master's from London School of Economics. I currently work for a top Wall Street bank, working with budgets, P and L, lending, capital markets. My top priorities are really four priorities. It's finances. I really want to work with the district and the board to keep the taxes in line by reducing bond interest, by shopping around for a better interest rate, leasing versus purchasing, offloading some of the cost to bondholders versus the residents, reallocating a lot of the costs. I have years of experience on Wall Street, dealing with several projects where I've saved hundreds of millions of dollars with different banks. The second thing is STEM. We live in a digital age with Alexa, Google, and Roomba. And I want to make sure our kids are equipped to align with the digital age. I would like to add programming, robotics, and engineering on all levels, especially the elementary level where we can add a lot of programming languages like Scratch, Python, Java. I've coached several children for Lego robotic competitions and Vex Robotics and have won several championships. So that's very passionate for me. I've had to deal with a lot of trauma in my own family. So mental health is a really important thing for me. I'd like to introduce a lot of mental health awareness in the school system with performing arts, theater, yoga, mindfulness, meditation, art of living, counseling, and social work. That's about it. I hope you will vote for me. Thank you.
Aaron, it's your turn.
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the moderators, Sarah and Jorge, and the South Mountain Civic Association and West Hobart Neighborhood Association for hosting this amazing event and providing an opportunity for everyone to hear from us candidates. To introduce myself, I'm currently a Milburn High School senior. I spent my entire educational career in this town and district from kindergarten to senior year. I've spent much of my high school career dedicated to community service, the school district, and our greater community. I've served as the president of the Milburn High School Key Club, the largest community service organization in the school for the past two years. I also run a volunteer tutoring program that spans all the schools in the district. I'm running for the Board of Education to benefit the educational experience of my peers and the students younger than me. This community made me who I am today and I credit it with my success. Plus, I want to give back to the community in the best way I know how by joining the Milburn Board of Education and using my experience as a student in this school system to improve it however possible. To the board, I would bring renewed prioritization on promoting student mental health. And to achieve this, I'll promote early exposure of students to guidance counselors and other mental health figures. I'll advocate getting young students, likely elementary schoolers, to speak with counselor figures whether they need it or not. This way, as they get older and develop an actual need to speak with counselors for whatever reason, they will feel comfortable reaching out and asking for help. I'll also work on keeping students and the rest of the community informed on decision-making and events happening in regards to the Board of Education. Students are the primary responsibility of our school system, so they deserve to be aware of what the board does and have their voices heard in regards to it. And rest assured, after I graduate, I will not be leaving this town. All the colleges I'm applying to, since I am a senior, are within short driving distance of here. So I'll forever remain committed to the board and to my duties to it. So I ask all of you for your support on November 2nd as I work to ensure the school district benefits everyone and ensure our town students are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Brian, your time is on.
Thank you, South Mountain Civic Association and West Hobart Neighborhood Association for hosting this forum. I am Brian Lawrence and we have had the pleasure of living in Milburn Short Hills for over six years. I have a son Jonah who's in seventh grade and daughter Emma in fourth grade. And they have received great education at Hartshorn Elementary, Washington School, and Milburn Middle School. Our kids, my wife and I have benefited greatly from the education program and from the special education services. The special education services is amazing and I've had true appreciation of this program and how it separates our district from others. I want to help ensure that we continue to provide the best support and education for all the students in our community. I'm running to serve the Milburn Board of Education because I care and because I have the time, the skills, and the background. As a CPA and a former chief financial officer, I understand budgets and financing. As a CEO of a non-for-profit senior living provider in New Jersey, I understand operations, infrastructure, and strategic planning. Because of my financial and business background, I will ask the right questions. I'm sure that the budget, which represents almost 50% of our township tax collections, is appropriately allocated to the right resources to support the students, school infrastructure, and that our teachers are getting the right support and training they need. I will proactively help establish a plan with the board and administration to keep our class sizes stable when the pending future growth of housing comes in. And I will work hard so students are getting the best education, fair access to advanced placement classes in high school, and support for their mental health. If you choose me to serve on the Milburn Board of Education, I bring the same passion and dedication that I bring every day to my work, my family, and to my community. Please feel free to reach out to me anytime you want to talk further. You can email me at lawrenceformilburnboe@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The Bank, your time is, or will be on soon. It's now on. Yeah.
Hi, thanks. I'm Devon Nagretta and I'm running for Milburn Board of Education. My ballot position is A. F. I grew up in neighboring Livingston and attended Livingston High School. I have been a resident for Short Hills for over four years with my wife Diana and two children. Devin is a first grader at Deerfield and Vera will join her brother at Deerfield next year. I will have a vested interest in the school system for the next 14 years. If elected, I will serve as a voice for all families. I am excited for the opportunity to give back to our community and contribute to supporting the excellent education in the district. I believe I can provide the unique skills, knowledge, and insight needed to serve on the board. And I am willing to invest the time necessary to meet the responsibilities and give back to my community in this way. Professionally, I am president and CEO of an SS County-based large specialty pharmacy and healthcare consulting company. We provide outpatient retail and specialty services to hospital partners. Therefore, I have the unique management, problem-solving, communication, organizational, and budgetary skills that I am looking forward to bringing to the board. In addition, I have a doctorate in pharmacy from Northeastern University. I am a member of the St. Barnabas Medical Center Young Leaders Committee and I'm on the Board of Directors for the Milburn Soccer Club. If I were to be elected, I will work with the other board members to represent the entire district in all matters pertaining to education at all levels. My first goal will be familiarize myself with the current issues and decisions facing the board and work amicably with the other board members to set obtainable goals and support policies that help to promote and maintain excellence in the district. A key responsibility of the board is to act as a communication link between the public and the schools. And in that sense, I think we are a very approachable family and a good representation of the district. Again, I'm Devon Nagretta and I'm running for Milburn Board of Education. I ask you to cast your ballot for me, Devon Nagretta, A. F., on November 2nd. Thank you for your time and consideration. And thank you for all the candidates who participated and the South Mountain Civic Association and West Hobart Neighborhood Association for organizing this wonderful event. Thanks.
Thank you, Devon. Nitu, it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Nitu Sanhotra. We moved to the town in 2012. I have a senior and freshman in Milburn High School. I'm currently a board member and I'm running to get re-elected. I joined the board early summer and I've been working on subcommittees of finance program, property, and communication. When I joined the board, I was able to hit the ground running because of my past eight years of leadership role in PTO executive boards. I just finished my two-year term as a middle school PTO co-president and I've been in the boards of Deerfield and Washington School. I have started various STEM extracurricular programs in the elementary schools like robotics, chess, and math Olympia. And earlier this year, I conceptualized and organized the first-ever district-wide ed foundation STEM festival. I've also participated in various committees like Challenge Success Committee, which led to the rotate-and-drop schedule in middle school, and the start-time committees. So I have worked hard the past eight years trying to enrich the lives of our students. And in turn, this has been a very rewarding experience for me. This is really what I love doing. My children have gone through elementary, Washington, middle school, and high school. So I understand the issues at different levels and understand the changes that need to be brought about. Our school gives a great education and our kids are ready for the rigors of higher education. But it also puts a lot of pressure on our kids and for them to excel. I want to prioritize their well-being and emotional health along with academic rigor. The current board has done some good work in moving the needle on some of the issues like streamlining, assessment policies, AP access, block scheduling, and promoting culture of belonging. I hope to get re-elected so that we can keep the momentum going and see these changes to the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Nitu. Agnes, you're next.
Thank you, Sarah Merrily, Jorge Mark, from the South Mountain Civic Association and the West Hobart Neighborhood Association for this opportunity. And thank you to the members of the audience for joining us tonight. My name is Agnes Finn and I have lived in town for seven years with my husband and two children in the third and seventh grades. I feel very blessed to be raising our family here. And so over the years, I have volunteered in various roles as a way to give back to the community. Currently, I am a member of the Milburn Education Foundation Board of Trustees, a member of the Newcomers and Neighbors Club Board of Directors, president of the Korean Parents Organization, and advancement chair for the Boy Scouts Troop 15, among other things. As a practicing attorney for almost 20 years, I would like to offer up my legal skills and expertise to help our school community. After having worked at a couple of large law firms in both Boston and New York, I moved in-house to become a transactional attorney in the legal department of Fidelity Investments. I understand that it takes a tremendous amount of time and energy as well as a significant amount of coordination to bring about even small changes that can be effectuated by the board. I would like to help continue the progress that the board has made to maintain the excellent quality of education offered today and improve the mental health of our students. In addition, I would like to help the board navigate some potential changes to our children's learning environment. We need to ensure that we maintain academic excellence despite any potential increase in student enrollment from our new housing developments. We should also help our high school students stay competitive despite changes resulting from the pandemic, such as SAT testing becoming optional or test-blind colleges not even reviewing submitted test scores. And at the same time, we still have to continue the focus on student mental health and consider broadening that focus to elementary school students, especially after the pandemic. Everyone here tonight brings something different to the table. I'm bringing my skills and expertise as an accomplished lawyer who day in and day out negotiates deals by being collaborative and creative to find the middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. Now Jing, it's your turn.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, South Mountain Civic Association and West Hobart Neighborhood Association for hosting the event tonight. My name is Jing Wen. I'm a Milburn resident since 2015 with two boys in the public school system. I have a senior in Milburn High School and an eighth grader in Milburn Middle School. Before moving here, my family was living in Summit for 11 years. And my older boy went through the elementary school system there. Like many parents in this district, I'm deeply committed to providing my children with an excellent and well-rounded education. Since moving to this town, I have actively volunteered at both the school level and the district level. At school level, I volunteer for international festivals, Strawberry Festival at the Harsham Elementary School. And at Washington School, I volunteer for the cultural arts program where I make presentation to the fifth-grade students. At the middle school, I volunteer for teacher appreciation lunching, TGIF. And at the high school, I was a Milburn High School Speech and Debate Parent Judge volunteer as well as volunteering for the senior celebration activities. So it's been a very fulfilling, interesting, and fun experience for me. On the district level, I was the co-chair of the Sleep Advisory Committee for the District's Start Time Investigation Initiative as well as a member of the District Advisory Committee for two years, where we serve as parent advisor as well as a sounding board to preview the initiative that was putting out by the superintendent. So I have experience working with the district leadership. I've always been passionate about education and attended many BOE meetings since I arrived at the town. In fact, since I left my work back in 2018, I had twice volunteered to fill the board vacancies on BOE. Inspired by engaging, engaged and active parents in this town, I feel that I'm ready to contribute and to give back to the community. And what I can promise to you is my time, commitment, and dedication. I come with a 25-year work experience in financial accounting, finance.
Jing, your time is off already. You have five more seconds to finish. Your time is off.
Oh, my time is off. But yeah, what I can bring to the board is my 25-year real-world financial experience, expertise. And what I advocate if I'm elected are health and safety in returning full-time, in-person learning, mental health and wellness, great initiative as sustainability, as well as diversity and inclusion. So thank you for being here tonight and I ask for your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Jing. The candidates have been given two questions to prepare a response. Each candidate will have a maximum of two minutes to respond. I'll just revisit the order in which this question will have responses. And that will be Agnes, Brian, Monisha, Jing, Crystal, Devang, Aaron, and Nitu. This is the first question. What is your opinion of the current protocols in Milburn Public Schools for managing COVID? For example, masking, testing, and vaccination, what would you do differently? And we ask you to please frame your answer as if there were no state mandate. Thank you. Agnes.
Our district is staying up to date with COVID-related matters and striving to keep students and schools in the safest way possible. There are routine communications and we may want to also include our community's overall vaccination rates. There's an overwhelming majority of staff and eligible students who are vaccinated. 95% of our residents have had at least one shot and 87% have received both shots. Hopefully, these numbers can provide some comfort. I really would have liked to have reopened schools earlier last year, but hindsight is 2020. And I recognize that the board had to deal with the pandemic for the very first time. Now, I know, Sarah, you said that we have to assume that there's no mandate, but that wasn't in the original question. But I have to say, the governor's mandate for masks when students are indoors and vaccination or routine testing for school staff, to me, serves as evidence that we need those things. He has not yet decided to require vaccines for the students now. Consistent with the CDC's position, vaccination requirements for schoolchildren have been established by the state. And in our case, it's the New Jersey Department of Health, not the Board of Education. I do not see it as the role of the board to override state requirements or to act in place of our Department of Health to create new ones. So while I would love for us to not have masks, we're just not there yet. I am in support of vaccines and it is helpful that our district offers routine testing. So I am comfortable with the protocols in place today. We should, however, continue to educate the community on the vaccines, especially if it gets approved for children's ages size 11, which could happen as early as November, as the FDA is expected to review by the end of this month Pfizer's request for emergency authorization. I don't feel that I should make medical decisions for anyone. And most importantly, I don't believe that my personal beliefs or those of any sitting board member should carry any weight here. As an elected board member, I would follow and support the requirements of our state and Department of Health. That is all board members should do, especially as to my knowledge, no one sitting on or currently running for the board is a medical expert in the area. Good leaders can separate personal opinions from what is good for the public health. And this is about the board working together for the overall well-being of the school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. Brian?
Yes, thank you. My work involves the care for seniors who are the most vulnerable to COVID-19 and its variants. From the beginning, I have been immersed in education, science, studies, and weekly calls by the CDC to primary health and disease experts. I put measures in place to protect our team members and all the seniors that we care for. I personally witnessed the devastation of this pandemic and its long-term effects. Poor children are not immune. They will pass it on to others and they may suffer themselves. Over 63,000 children have been hospitalized and over 600 kids have died in the U.S. Over 140,000 kids have lost a parent or grandparent who cared for them. That's one out of 500 children lost someone. I would not want to see my children or any child, parent, or grandparent in this district hospitalized or even worse when it's preventable. I do support and encourage testing, everyone wearing masks, and receive the vaccine if eligible. I believe these precautions do make a difference. I want to share one experience. Recently, somebody at work I work with who's a mother of a five-year-old and who's married. She's in her 30s and vaccinated because of our mandates at my organization. They went on a trip and the daughter got sick from COVID, was hospitalized. She thanked God she's fine. She came out a few days later. And then she wasn't feeling well, the mother, and the father was asymptomatic. Two weeks, she was fine, getting back to work. And then that day, two weeks later, she lost a scene in one eye, got rushed to the hospital and stayed there a few days and got some treatments. The doctor said if she wasn't vaccinated, she would have lost her life. So I do encourage masking and vaccination and hope all you'll be well and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Monisha, you're next.
Thank you. I think the school has done a great job following the CDC guidelines and the law in place. I do encourage my children and my son and I, at least my teenage son and I, have been vaccinated. I do encourage vaccination in terms of protecting ourselves from this pandemic. In terms of masking and testing, I think the school has done very well in terms of continuing with the masking mandate and also encouraging testing. I come from a family of doctors and the virus has been quite detrimental for some with pre-existing conditions. I think it's really important that we continue to sanitize. I do see that we are a little bit more lax in sanitization. Like before the kids get into the lunchroom, typically before, last year, we would sanitize everyone's hands before they get in. Now that they're going into the lunchroom, it's not been mandated. A lot of children are in touch with each other, touching each other, playing with each other. So I think it's important to continue to wash your hands and sanitize. I would definitely add that into the school system to make sure that before any gathering on any area where children are getting together, at least they should sanitize before they come in. I would just continue to also follow the protocols for the country and for the state and ensure that the school abides by all the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Jing?
Hi. I do support the school's current COVID protocols and I believe they're doing a good job, a fairly decent job. I support their indoor masking mandate regardless of your vaccination status. And that's in line with the state recommendation in line with the CDC as well as American Academy of Pediatric Recommendation. In addition, I support the school's current stand on encouraging the students for vaccinations. And also regarding with staff, the staffs are required for vaccination or be subject to testing on a weekly basis at a minimum. I think all of those are very prudent protocols according to the state requirement. And another thing I think the school is doing a great job is during the lunchtime, for example, the middle school, they try to keep students in a small module. And each grade, they separate them into two different groups to be having lunch at different locations so that reduces the chance of transmission. Although kids at that age is very hard to be disciplined, but I think the school is trying to keep some level of social distance among them. And as well as high school, they've done some modularization initially, but eventually they open up to a common lunch, which is very well-needed for providing wellness for high school students. And what I would recommend, one thing I would recommend they do differently is currently the school say unless, that they will provide remote access. the school say unless that they will provide remote access for learning, unless you test for students that tested positive on COVID. So it presents a problem for for students who getting who are sick. Let's say, for example, they they got a cold, or they're not sure whether or not it's it's actually a COVID diagnosis. So during that time, and they put.
Excuse me, Jing, you're you've gone over your time again.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna finish quickly. So they put a responsibility of monitoring kids' health with parents, which is fine. But then, in order to help them to carry out this responsibility, I feel when the kids get sick and doesn't have the chance to be diagnosed positive right away, maybe the school can give out remote access for students to learn remotely for a day or two, one to three days before they.
Okay, we'll have we'll have to stop you there. Thank you. Chris, Crystal, you are next.
Okay, thank you. Um, COVID has been around and will more than likely stick around for a while. Um, even with strict precautions, it seems that there isn't a way to stop a hundred percent of cases, but we should have the goal to maximize the chance of spreading. I believe the current COVID protocols of masking tests and vaccinations and um following the CDC guidelines have been diligently followed by by the Milburn Public Schools to the best of their abilities. I commend the board and district on working tirelessly to get our children's back to school in person safely. What I would do differently, but more, I'd say in addition, uh, would be to get data on how our kids are adjusting since COVID, um, since COVID, now that school is in person. Um, not assessments, but how can we get to the core of the issues stemming from the workload of our students coupled with the mental and emotional aftermath of COVID? And um transitioning back to school after um being remote, socially isolated for over a year and a half. Um, and after getting this data, I'd go all in, all hands on deck with stress and mental health programs, uh, classes and professionals to apply life and coping skills for all of our children and staff. Uh, this is what I do in addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Devang?
Sure, thank you. So the number one priority right now is to keep our staff and students safe and healthy and physically present for a full day for continued in-person learning. We must focus on the road forward. We have to make evidence-based decisions, follow expert guidelines from the CDC, New Jersey Department of Education and Health, communicate between the district and families, continuously monitor and prove, and prioritize the level of safety for staff and students as the highest importance. As a trained healthcare professional and a healthcare business owner, I can provide valuable insight and expertise in making decisions and implementing safe and effective procedures for our district's COVID protocols. I support a multi-layered approach as best practice, which includes vaccination, masking, contract tracing, improving airflow, screening, testing, and more. I support mandatory masking, promoting vaccinations in eligible individuals, testing, screening protocols, and the updated notification procedures, all of which have been incorporated in the district's protocols. So far this year, we have had fifty-seven positive cases, seventy-five individuals who had to quarantine, two classrooms which had to quarantine for two days, and no full school closures. We must continue to follow protocols and continuously continually monitor and adapt with the focus of keeping students in person, in school for learning. Hopefully, children ages five to eleven will have access to the vaccination in the coming months. Communication is key, and the district must must continue to provide transparency with the community, which is shown already in the COVID dashboard notifications and updates. As we focus on the road forward, now we have student, now that we have students back in the classroom, we have to address learning loss and student well-being and mental health in the wake of the collective impact brought on by the pandemic. It is important for the district to monitor and evaluate the student assessments ongoing to see if there is modifications to the curriculum if they're needed and give the students what they need to not only meet the core standards and skills, but to exceed them. The next step is working to get students and staff to utilize the well-being resources, programs, and support that are currently available. There is a stigma associated, but we have to find a way to work through that, and perhaps it can be through group or peer-led discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you. So far, I believe the Board of Education and the schools are doing a good job of preventing the spread of COVID in the schools, since after all, we have had no foreclosures, and we've had an extremely limited number of COVID cases and no major outbreaks. However, I do believe we can do more for further guarantees of safety against COVID nineteen. This high school had a minor outbreak where ten-plus seniors caught the virus, proving or had to quarantine, proving that our safety mechanisms are not impeccable. First, a vaccine is not a guarantee of safety, especially if the spread of the Delta variant. We see with the fact that a number of Milburn seniors still caught the virus, despite many of them being vaccinated, the vaccine will likely eliminate the majority of symptoms, but the disease is still transmissible and diseases' long-term effects are still under study, but there is potentially cause for chronic fatigue and memory damage. This ups the importance of students wearing masks while indoors, which should be a policy constantly maintained till the COVID pandemic has finally passed over. And despite not being a guarantee, I still highly recommend anyone who is eligible for the vaccine to get it, so we can minimize the chance of spread. We should also increase our contact tracing efforts, where if a student has positive for COVID nineteen, students who are seated next to them in their classes should be called for testing in case they contracted COVID as well. This way, we can put an outbreak before it can spread. We have a mission to protect our students and our community. This mandates vigilance in regards to tracking and containing the spread of COVID nineteen if it is ever a threat. If students contract the disease, they could bring it home to their family, where there may be elderly members or members of underlying conditions. COVID is life-threatening to these groups, and we must do whatever possible to protect them while also keeping our schools open so students can receive a full and in-person education. And from beyond that, we should be providing more wellness resources or making sure students are utilizing the wellness resources we already have available to recover from whatever social effects or emotional effects they may have experienced from the COVID pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Nitu?
After more than a year of online learning, the priority right now is to continue having a full-time in-person instructions. And administration has done a good job of following the state guidelines for all the safety protocols. CDC has recommended universal indoor masking, and that's what the governors mandated, so that's what we have been following. Um, the staff has required to get vaccinated or undergo COVID testing, and the administration has collected the data, and I believe the number of vaccinations are very high in our school buildings, close to ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent for our staff. We've been following other protocols within the classrooms, we're maintaining three feet of physical distancing, lunches are either spread out or outside. The cleaning and disinfecting protocols have been put in place. The school updated the filters last year. We have Merv aid filtration and bipolar ionization system. The nurses are in touch with Department of Health for contract tracing and quarantine protocols. And the school has been good at updating their contract tracing and notification procedures as things have moved along. Currently, the community the community transmission for our county is yellow, which is at moderate level. So, uh, if it goes up or high as situation changes, the administration will be changing the protocols accordingly as per the state guidelines. So if it goes up to red, red, uh, screening, testing is is one of the option. Fortunately, now we have cheek swabs and not just nasal swab. I know nasal swabs makes many kids uncomfortable. So we can actually put in screening, uh, testing and not just diagnostics testing in. Of course, for that, we will have to make sure that the process is, uh, you know, is easy to follow, and it does not put any undue burden on the parents. Um, so I am confident that, um, the administration is keeping an eye on the transmission levels and the latest updates and the latest guidelines and will change the protocol protocol as needed.
Thank you. Now on to the lightning round. Candidates will have one minute to respond to each question. Please be aware of the clock. Four candidates will respond to each question. The candidates were not given the questions in advance. Candidates were assigned to questions at random, so that each candidate will answer two of the four questions. So I'll begin with the order, so you listen to the question and the rest of you will relax. Brian, Nitu, Devang, and Aaron in that order. All right, here is the question. Do you support the current school configuration with a central fifth grade? Would you be in favor of returning the fifth grade to the elementary schools as a redistricting strategy? And we'll start with Brian.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, I could tell we've experienced the fifth grade, um, and there's pros and cons for every side, and it's always worth, uh, studies and discussions with people's experiences throughout the district who have had the pleasure of of them using Washington School. I tell you, our experience was, um, second year, it was, um, opened, and it was definitely better than the first year from what I heard. But I could tell you, my son thrived and did well at the school and benefited from bringing all the kids together at fifth grade to be prepared for middle school. Um, so from my own personal experience, I would, um, keep it the way it is. I thought it really benefited, uh, my child and other children as well. But I'm definitely open to hear what other parents think and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Nitu?
Yes, I was, my kids were in Deerfield School. In fact, my child was the first one to go into the Washington School. And, um, I know this was a controversial issue, which I was a little surprised about mainly because Deerfield School was one of the schools which was bursting in seams. Uh, we had taken over the art spaces for classrooms. We had got art in cart because, uh, we didn't have space, and our common spaces were getting utilized for classrooms. So, uh, I know some schools where where they not have this issue, but I had I knew that some schools did have capacity issues, so, uh, good. Buying the Washington School was one of, uh, it worked out very well for the schools which had capacity issues. Also, uh, I think for socializing, it was a very, it worked very well for kids to all come together in one school before they were hit with the academic river of river of middle school. They were able to gel well in Washington School.
Thank you. Devang?
Yes, thanks. Um, so for the Washington School, I believe that, um, you know, it, you know, it is a good idea because we had increased enrollment numbers, um, compared to this year, um, in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, prior to the Washington School. So it was a very proactive, um, and I might be stepping into the next question, but it was a proactive look to, um, address increased enrollment in the town. Um, and having the space is very important because it allowed the elementary schools to have more space to grow. Um, it also was looking forward to, um, increased enrollment and the transition and providing that for children. Um, and at first, I think there was, um, some, you know, speaking to a lot of parents, uh, there was a lot of, um, issue with some of the busing and start times, but now that it's been a couple of years and that's been cleared up, it's great for a transition. Um, and I think it's a great way for, um, the town to plan for the, um, you know, increased enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron?
Thank you. I'm in support of the idea of having all the fifth graders centralized in the Washington School. Fifth graders are in a critical moment of schooling where they're right on the precipice of entering middle school, where schedules, teaching methods, the fact that they have to now travel to the different classrooms instead of staying in one classroom the entire day. So their schooling lives are about to be completely switched. So I believe it would be beneficial for them to be dipping their toes into that transition by being in a centralized school for themselves in the fifth grade, where we can introduce different policy transitions to help them better enter the middle school later on. And with the logistical inefficiencies we inefficiencies we saw, like with busing, those will only improve as we spend more time getting used to having the middle, the fifth graders in the Washington School. Also, I don't see how it would ever be realistically possible to return the fifth graders back to the elementary schools. When I went to Glenwood, um, we had students taking lessons in a trailer. The schools, I don't believe, would have the capacity to handle having fifth grade again. Plus, I fully support having the Washington School the way it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge?
And so we, as we said before, we received many questions from the public. So we tried to put together many of those questions. It's just one question, so that will look like a long question, but it's just because we were trying to be fair with everybody. So candidates will have again one minute to respond. The candidates who will answer the following questions are Jing, Agnes, Crystal, and Devang. Here is the question. This question is about the wellness of our students. Many students are suffering from anxiety, school refusal, and depression. This may be due to bullying or a high-stress environment. So the question is, what steps could you take to help our students? How can the district better identify and address these issues? And how can the school better support those who feels different because of race, gender, sexual orientation, or other diversity? Jing, you go first.
Okay, in terms of this bullying issue, I understand, actually, I was just at a BOE meeting the other day where the superintendent made a report on the what she calls the Safety S S A D report, and yeah, basically, it includes the HIP reporting. And this reporting takes place twice a year, one in October, one in February. So what she just did was the October reporting, um, for period from January first to, I believe, was the, um, July first. So what she indicated, there was no, um, incident was reported that's HIP-related. So which was a good news compared to the same period last year, there were about sixteen cases that were reported, four of which was, um, was suspected to be HIP-related, and two were confirmed to be a a HIP issue. So I think on this issue that the school is improving, which is, which is awesome. But nevertheless, it doesn't mean we don't need to do any work on it. So continued work needs to be done on this topic. And some of the things I would suggest, primarily focus on diversity and inclusion. One of my ideas is really to introduce.
Sorry to interrupt you. I hate to do this, but your time is off, and we need to respect all the other candidates. So we need to be very careful with the time. So please, five seconds to finish this.
Five seconds, yeah, to introduce a, uh, in the curriculum about just contribution from other ethnic ethnic groups, from different groups of America to, so that to make them feel they belong to this country, to have education early on. That's it. Thank you.
And next, Agnes.
Sure, there's a focus now on inclusivity and really creating a sense of belongingness for students, which which I wholeheartedly support. Um, the board has a role to ensure that policies and regulations are in place to monitor progress. Uh, and this remains highly important to ensure that progress continues, but also accelerates when we have more research on how other mental health services can be most easily accessed by all students. Our district is also doing now more than it did before in terms of diversity and inclusion training. It's now included in our curriculum K through twelve, and I'd like to see more of that. But really, at the end of the day, um, we as the educators, students, and parents really need to continue the dialogue on, uh, our shared goals and whether different tracks may be needed for different students, especially at the high schools. The aspirations to get access to the best universities, I think that creates a lot of peer and parental pressure. So I would like to focus on allowing more alternatives and balance for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. Crystal, you're next.
All right, one minute. I I could speak for hours on this easily. Um.
You have one minute.
Okay, one minute. I'll do my darndest. Um, well, I want to address, like, you know, the 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 race and, um, the sexuality and, um, the the, um, LGBT um, Q plus, you know, I I believe that we need more, um, pockets of places for them to, um, for all of us to vent and to speak. I believe we need more liaisons. Um, I know there's a student liaison in the middle school and in the high school, but we need more, and we need to make sure they're diverse. We need to make sure they're diverse in the in the terms that there are there are people who have voices that don't feel like they can speak. Um, we need to reach out aggressively, address, um, bullying. Um, it's great that we have, I mean, we've been in, we've been indoors and quarantined, so we need more, we need more data to show as time goes on, because we don't know what what's gonna happen this year. Um, we also need to get more guidance counselors, more professionals, um, pro being proactive and reaching out to the students individually, in groups, um, and getting the different groups to speak up and to say, hey, what's going on? Tell us what's going on and how can we help? And then bring it to the board, bring it to the board and say, here, this is what's happening. Um, this is what's being said. These are the books we're having issues with. I know there are some books that are read, and some of the the black kids are affected by them because they have the N-word in it, and it's said over and over and over again. So those are things that I would say that we could do to, um, help start the conversation and start to address those things.
Thank you, Crystal. I know we can.
Thank you, Crystal. I know we can talk about
We can.
Hours, I know. But we have some time here. So Devang, you are the next.
Um so during the campaign, I've had the opportunity to speak with uh many parents who have children in the middle school, the elementary and high schools. I think this is a real issue, um and I think wellness has to be a top top priority. Um I would support the goals, programs, and efforts for well-being currently underway and hope to expand them. Uh examples are the initiation of later school start times, the middle school pilot and exploring different scheduling options, a reevaluation of our A P placement process, and student assessments and evaluations. The next step is now also getting students to utilize the well-being resources that are available in our school. I would promote and develop and expand upon the hundred fifteen programs in place currently, which include awareness of history months, guest speakers, community programs, and staff development. I think creating a sense of belonging for all students enhances learning success as all students feel like they are an important part of the school community. Um I also support some of the programs that are currently um a collaboration with the Thrive Alliance, which is um, you know, helpful for high-risk pay, um higher-risk students and, you know, providing um after-school resources for those students and also professional development. And I I support programs like Say Something, which is again a way to anonymous anonymously um report if there's any wellness um um issues by students or teachers, and that helps with wellness checkup. So I would continue to promote some of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Devang. Uh I think this question was for, we should have more time for this question, but this is uh the rule. So thank you, everybody. So this is the next question, and this question will be answered by Aaron, Agnes, Netu, and Monisha. And the question is, our district does an excellent job of encouraging and challenging high-achieving students. So the question is, what do you think is the best way to balance achievement, fairness, and opportunity for those students of different abilities? Aaron, you go first.
Okay, thank you. So I am a strong advocate of providing more academic and extracurricular opportunities for students. There's no student out there who isn't skilled in something, perhaps not in skill as skilled in academics, which we put a lot of weight on. But many of them are are incredibly talented in music, theater, arts, sports, athletics, anything. And we need to provide more opportunities to cater to those students so that we as a school, not only thrive academically, but we thrive in the sports field, we thrive in theater, we thrive in the arts. And this provides students more opportunities to find success, more opportunities to flourish based on their interests and passions, and that we don't force them to tunnel into something like into something like academics when they have so much more talent elsewhere. So I believe the key is providing more extracurricular, more academic opportunities throughout all the schools of the district on the elementary level, middle school level, and high school level so that we can see our students properly flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Agnes, you go next.
Sure. So I touched about on this very briefly in my last uh question. But for me, it's all about allowing students to pursue their interests, giving them an opportunity to even explore new ones. Um I don't think there's a formula for success in the high school students, probably the, you know, contrary to belief. Um it's not all about taking A P classes, as many as you can, and getting into the top university. So I I feel like we need to take a step back. We need to educate parents and students that there should still be a love of learning even at the high school level, you know, college is not the end game. Um and we should do what we can do, like to eliminate some of these added stress factors, like the A P qualifiers probably adds extra stress and maybe even heightens the desire for students to take A P courses even if they're not genuinely interested. Um I would like to support alternate avenues, um similar to what Aaron said too, in the performing arts area. There there are so many talented students. Every time I see a high school musical, I am blown away, and I wish we can do more there as well, without finding balance and finding more alternatives for our students.
Thank you, Agnes. Netu, you go next.
Yeah, we have to uh discuss and bring a culture where we accept different paths to success. And I I know college admission is is a big concern for uh our parents, but I think our parents don't realize that even our um the kids who are in the middle, they actually if from uh from Midburn High School, they actually end up in very good colleges. Going to Ivy League or Tier One College should not be the only driver for um for kids, and that is the pressure which adds a lot of stress for our kids. So um that that is a a bit of parent education comes into picture here. I think we need to help the parents understand how they can uh help their children navigate the different uh education options that the high school offers. It is not of all about trying to get into a the bigger and better A Ps. Of course, opening the A P access to middle-rung students also helps. And um and yes, as Aaron mentioned, uh there are different abilities, different kids with different abilities, whether it's sports, performing arts, uh we have to give them, give students more opportunity to develop their talent there.
Thank you. Monisha, you're next.
Thank you. That's a phenomenal question. I've always actually questioned that, having had a global education. I always think that, you know, children need to be uh introduced to different cultures, different uh um as art fields like performing arts, theater, you know, STEM education. We need an all-round education. I think we do a phenomenal job with uh reading, writing, social studies in the elementary level and the middle school, but when we get to the high school, we throw the kitchen sink on the child. I think it's important to develop some of these uh areas outside, you know, just academics uh at an elementary and middle school level, like performing arts or drama or theater. Um I also want to, uh you know, one of my things is um is to reinstate the special needs um subcommittee. Um I have a child who's a special needs and, you know, academics might not be everything for him. I want to make sure that he has an education outside academics that he could explore when he comes out of middle school, uh out of high school. Um it's it's a very important to re- address all all children and all their abilities and enhance the abilities that they have. It's not just academics. I think that's important to um for all-round development. On a global basis, I think a lot of other education systems have an all-round development, like Europe, Asia, and to, you know, just several other countries, and I think we need to incorporate some of that. Thank you.
All right, so we have another audience question. This is also one of our longer questions. And the candidates who will respond will be in this order. Uh Monisha, Brian, Jing, and Crystal. Over the past several years, programming and funding have been diverted from other areas to expand the focus on STEM programs. For example, elementary schools no longer have dedicated resources for art and music, and their budgets have been reduced. Library budgets have also been reduced by as much as twenty-five percent and library space converted for robotic programs. Here's a question. What specific additional STEM programs do you believe are essential for Milburn schools at this time? And how do you propose incorporating these without further diminishing the quality and quantity of programming in the arts? And Monisha is first.
Great. This is the perfect question because I'm so passionate about STEM being an engineer myself. So I'm so happy that I'm I'm the first one in this thing. We live in an age where we have Alexa at home, Google, and it's important for our kids to be exposed to STEM from a young age. They might not become engineers, they might not become doctors, but you know, an exposure will i- is is great for them at a young age. I know my son, a couple of years ago now, he's at the end of his middle school, getting into high school, had some programming like Scratch um in his kindergarten uh level, and then they scrapped it. I think we really need to reinstate it so that children have an appreciation towards, you know, some uh programming. Uh we used to have a lot of uh, you know, after-school and uh competitions like um, you know, Lego Robotics and Vex Robotics um where which were uh which were run by parents. We've we've lost a lot of that over the pandemic. I think I would really like to see that back into the curriculum where we could do it like Odyssey of the Mind or Entrepreneur in Wyoming. We could bring back, you know, uh Lego robotic competitions or clubs at the elementary and middle school. Um the third thing I would also like to add is, uh you know, class STEM trips. Um you know, just having a trip to like Nokia Labs, who's very close to us, or Pfizer, or or some of the pharmaceuticals around the area, just to introduce children to um to uh, you know, manufacturing, engineering, and innovation.
And I will stop you there, Monisha. I know you feel strongly about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Yes, no, thank you. Um I'm a firm believer in STEM. Um STEM is so critical, important to the foundation of education and be prepared for the future and going to society and the workforce. Um right now, Horschon just announced a STEM lab, which is phenomenal. I'd like to see that extended throughout all of the elementary schools, starting from the kids who are young, not just men, but women too. You know, women are a significant part of the workforce, and STEM is equally important for both men and women. And I want to see programs not just for the boys, but also strongly focus on education, STEM focus on the on the girls as well. Uh but I I do want to flip this around a little bit, and I do want to focus on arts and education and theater and music. That is equally important for children. I can't speak highly enough for that. Yes, you need the education, we need the STEM, that's so important. But also having that well-balanced approach for arts and education, and I would want to see more resources and focus on that to benefit a much more well-rounded approach for children for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jing?
Yes, hi. Um I'm definitely on the same boat as uh as what Brian just described. STEM is very important. Um but so are arts and the arts, performing arts, uh music, music education. I think they're equally important. Uh what we could do is, I believe on a middle school level, maybe you can introduce more of the STEM as a cycle course. Like as of now, I know my seventh, eighth grader now, last year, he had a cycle. It was just one quarter of a year. He took robotics, which he liked it. But in terms of programming, I think it could be supplemented as an after-school enrichment. So it may not have to be done through part of the curriculum and instruction, but it could be done as an add-on enrichment through P T L. Um other things, so as of now, I if there's any more introduction STEM, I which I think the most, yeah, probably introduced through through cycle, I I don't think it should be taken away more from arts and music because I believe that's equally equally important. Either a skill student needs to develop both on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal?
All right, another topic I could go on and on and on about. Um I am an a strong advocate for the arts. I don't think it should be STEM. I think it should be STEAM with an extra M for music. I really, really believe in the importance of the arts because you grow in character, you go, you learn how to collaborate with others, you learn how to make decisions, you learn leadership skills, you learn all types of yeah motor skills, you're working a different side of the brain. So it might be unpopular, but I'd say um I'd want I'd encourage, I would encourage the board to look into getting more grants for the arts. We have a very, we have a phenomenal STEM program, and the Ad Foundation has given money um to the district to expand on it, and we have cut from the arts. And usually, it's that's the first thing to go. And I really believe that's the a big mistake because chi- children need the arts, teens need the arts to express themselves as well. And if they don't have that, then what do they have? Um I believe that we, yes, you should learn about science, math, um engineering, technology. Yes, we want to keep up. But we also want to not neglect what is important as well, which is using the other side of the brain, which is in the arts, both fine and performing arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge?
So um as we mentioned before, we, the candidate, we are given two questions to prepare. So this is the second question. And the question is, given the expected amount of new development and its potential impact on the school district, what steps do you think that the Board of Education should be taking to prepare for the future? The order, the the first one to answer this question will be Netu.
Uh the board leadership has been in contact with the town leadership and has been updating the property committee, of which I'm a member. We are looking at the five developments in the horizon, namely the Anisas, Bels Fargo, D P W, Woodland, and Woodman, apart from uh the Uptown, of course. We have been getting updated enrollment numbers from Uptown. Once we have the final numbers, we will, we can use that number to estimate the number of kids to be expected from these future developments for planning purposes. So this gives the future needs. Administration is also reporting enrollment data soon that would be giving the number of classes and kids in uh each grade in each school. And uh we can get data of how many more classrooms that can be added in each schools, and that gives the total of current capacity we have. So whatever is the shortfall between the current capacity and the future need is what we have to plan in terms of addition. As per our capital maintenance plan, there is a board referendum uh due uh gonna be coming up in year twenty-four, twenty-five. The way it works is we time the issuing of the newborns to the expiring of the old ones so that there's no net tax increase. So I would be expecting one or more space additions lined up in that referendum. In the meantime, um our current enrollment is actually not one of the highest. In two thousand twelve and thirteen, we had total four nine six five. And last year, we had four six five six. This year, it will be slightly more, but we will know the actual numbers soon. So um and so we have about actually two fifty to three hundred kids less than we had earlier. And that was even before we had Washington School. So we do have capacity to add uh the classes in our elementary school. Of course, uh board may have to consider um acquiring land or building to plan for any more constructions that may get planned in the overlay zones. Um but uh that's for a much longer term view.
Thank you, Netu. Aaron, you're next.
All right, thank you. Admittedly, we will likely see a natural influx of students in the school district as new te- town developments are completed and new town residents move in. However, the Board of Education has already informed the candidates and public alike that many of the schools in our district have extra capacity available to handle an influx of students, especially the high school, middle school, and large elementary schools. In fact, the board has stated that the enrollment in our school is actually lower than historic levels, which means we have more space available. But the population of our town has been continually growing in the past few years, and these developments will likely accelerate that population growth. For us, it is likely we will eventually meet capacity in our schools. And to that, and we should prepare to expand and renovate our school systems. We will have to find a source of funds, such as possibly by selling more bonds or finding sponsors for other parts of our district, like maintenance of the athletic field, so we can save budgeting money for new renovations across this district, even if done incrementally. However, we shouldn't be worried about the expense. We were guaranteed to need to expand and renovate our schools eventually since our population is growing and our schools and our school buildings are aging. The new developments only accelerate this timetable. In addition, expansions and renovations will be beneficial for our district as a whole. There'll be modernizing part of our school, the parts of our schools, raising education quality for students, property values for the community, and our overall town's attractiveness. Ultimately, the key to a smooth transition is more students enter our schools and our schools undergo whatever renovations necessary is maintaining tight communication between the town, board, school administration, and keeping the community involved. This will allow us to efficiently handle any unexpected unexpected complications and better prepare for our growth in our enrollment numbers while ensuring our education quality remains the same for every student, if not improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Devang?
Thank you. I think the best approach to expect a new development is to be proactive. I also think communication is key to have the open line between the developers, the town council, and the Board of Ed to obtain enrollment projections and determine the impact and allow us to plan accordingly. The district is already underway and proactively planning for enrollment increases. Examples are the purchase of the Washington School, the expansion of the middle school cafeteria, and the innovative approach seen with the recent camp referendum. The camp referendum was a great example of how the school board and the township worked together to fund projects to improve and maintain school district facilities by issuing new bonds as existing bonds expire. This allowed the district to also access the only state aid for eligible capital projects. I would promote this mindset shit mindset shift and plan to finance reinvestment in district schools without increasing taxes. Most importantly, there are another group of bonds that expire in two thousand twenty-five that purposely have not been allocated because these bonds could be used as the next referendum to address increased enrollment and the impact on facilities going forward. Currently, there are five new and proposed development projects. The Uptown, which has mostly one and two bedrooms, has nine, a hundred ninety-five units and is projected to add approximately sixty-five students to the district. This building will serve as the district's lit- first litmus test, and this data will help guiding us for planning as there are similar-sized departments as the other developments. We must continue to be proactive and ensure potential increases are taken into consideration in all budget and fa- facility discussions. For example, one of the priorities in the current budget was preparation for new students from the Uptown Development, which considers staffing increases, transportation programs, and resources. We also have additional capacity, the current enrollment We also have additional capacity. The current enrollment is not at a historic high. There have been approximately 5% more students in 2016, 17, and 18 compared to the current year. That being said, we have to make sure we continue to address this issue. I support the 2021 board goal to examine the facilities, finance, policy, and academic impact of impending enrollment increases and the 2022 board goal to support the sustainability of our facility infrastructure and implementation of a long-range facilities plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Devang. Crystal, your turn.
Okay. After speaking with a professional consultant and a board member and understanding that by law we cannot build anything new unless we have children present, I'm for the idea of starting with getting a demographer to collect the data on who's graduated, who's moved out of town, or who's gone to private school, and then who has moved in, what age kids are expected to join with this, and with, when the kids are expected to join the schools. Since we aren't certain on exact numbers and the incoming and outgoing number of students will change annually, it's important that the district get a clearer, a clearer understanding on which zones will be impacted. If it's the elementary school, this will be, that will be impacted. The public has been assured by Dr. Burton that since opening the Washington School, there's been room for growth in the, in the, in the other elementary schools. But if they reach capacity, the district would need to look into considering temporary trailers or redistricting. In the Milburn Middle School, if the middle, excuse me, if the Milburn Middle School is affected heavily, Dr. Burton said that there are areas of the building that can be built upon. If the high school classes reach capacity, preparations for changing and converting spaces like offices into classrooms may be necessary. Another option is flex scheduling. With all that said, the district may need to be prepared for another referendum for a new building or reconstructing an old building. However, we can't make that determination until we hire a demographer to inform us on getting the accurate numbers of potential students joining our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Jing, you're next.
Hi. So, so the question asked about what was step do I think the BOE should take to prepare for the future? So the following is what I come up with. First of all, I think it's very important to keep the communication channel open between the BOE and the township committee leadership. Because we all need to work as a team to get this, to get this done for the future. And so, and so I'm glad to hear we need to explain now there's a property committee established between BOE and township so that we'll have regular updates on what is, you know, what's coming in terms of development. Second, I would recommend BOE, I believe, if not everybody, at least the president and VP, it would be good to everybody that really, along with the legal expertise, to thoroughly read and understand the settlement agreement that got in place with the developer, between the developer and the town, really understand what, what is a call for and what are the room that we can maneuver within that agreement. So once we understood our boundary, we know how to, how to move within a boundary. Third, I believe that we need to have a three- to five-year budget projections to kind of estimate the timing of the development, the timing of the number of students that may come into the districts at a different level, elementary, middle school, and high school, and assess the funding needs at each year, maybe on the quarterly or, or biannual or annual basis. And once you have an assessment of funding, you can do things ahead of time. So these are the things that I would recommend and also recommend them to have maybe a quarterly meeting between BOE, township, developer, legal lawyers to just discuss, make sure everybody's on the same page and make everybody moving at the same time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jing. Monisha, you're next.
I think the biggest concern for most of the Milburn residents is will our taxes go up? I think behind this question is the number one question. Having a finance background, I've allocated, you know, I've, I've looked at at least three to four million in terms of saves that we can get from the budget by reducing the interest rate for the bonds, by leasing versus purchasing, by reallocating several expenditures like, you know, just versus purchasing versus leasing. This helps us along with the 2025 bonds to, to be ready for the expansion of some of these schools. I think what, what some of my other candidates have mentioned, you know, we've been monitoring this very closely. We've handled this before with the, with the opening of Washington's School with the uptake of enrollment. So we, it shouldn't be an issue in terms of doing it again. I think I would look to, you know, hire more resources, expand the school, but also ensure that kids still have a quality education, and we're not compromising that in any way. I think the Upton has been a good indicator for us with only 63 enrollments as of today, which has been managed really well within our system. I think because of COVID last year, we had a huge reduction in enrollment, which has kind of balanced out this year with the number of kids leaving to go to private schools because, because of the in-person versus the half-day. That has been balanced out with the uptick of enrollment from Upton. I think next year with the other five developments coming in, that shouldn't, you know, you know, shouldn't be a problem in terms of accommodating in our schools across all levels. If we had to come back, you know, come to the state where we, we do have trailers, I think at that point we have sufficient money in the budget to look at, you know, building, building upwards in the middle school or building upwards in the high school or expanding, you know, some of the elementary schools depending on the enrollment.
Thank you, Monisha.
Thank you.
Brian, you're next.
Thank you. Planning ahead is so important. I've spent a great deal of time and effort on master plans for senior living communities that involved over 60 million to develop. The success of my organization or any organization or any school district depends greatly on planning for the future. We all understand the benefits of smaller class sizes. It is important for our children to receive quality interaction with their teachers. Studies have shown that smaller class sizes have significant long-term positive effects on student achievement and other meaningful outcomes. We may not know exactly how many children will enter our schools, but we can be prepared. We can access our current capacity and understand that and analyze that and develop educated assumptions. We need to obtain the right studies, retain the best information possible to understand just, not just how many, but when and where and what ages and what school they'll be attending. With that, we can put together scenarios and be very well-planned and ready for when it happens. If you choose me, we not only get a great planner, but you also have someone who understands finances, infrastructure, contracts, business, government regulations, and about people, and the importance of putting students first. Just remember to vote 4F for Brian Lawrence and feel free to reach out to me anytime at lawrencefrommilburnboe@gmail.com. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Brian. Agnes, you're next.
This is a very important issue, and I understand that the board is already reviewing the matter and considering next steps. First, the board should continue to maintain open lines of communication. The board needs to stay informed on the new housing developments, especially big ones like the one contemplated for the New Jersey American Water Site. The board also needs to stay informed on the number of families with school-aged or younger children moving into our district. Second, we have to keep tabs on the number of students per class at each school. The number will ebb and flow depending on the given year and the school. There may be more kids in private schools, for example, due to the pandemic these days. But I still worry that the capacity may be more limited at the elementary school, so we have to pay special attention there. There are class limits, so if we hit the max, we will also need aides to help the teachers, especially in the younger classes. Then we start planning because if we need more space and more teachers, we have to ask the public for more funds through a referendum, which could take at minimum one to two years. I recognize the reality that our district cannot build new schools or additions to existing ones or even hire additional teachers until we have actually increased numbers. We're not permitted to build up in advance based on, you know, on perceived need. There has to be an actual need. So we must be proactive with the planning so that we can act quickly when that need arises. And if we build up, let's also pull from our recent experience from the opening of the Washington School. At the same time we are planning, we could also proactively look to do some creative fundraising along the way. We could rent our school facilities on the weekends, for example, weekend cultural schools, programs and events. We could be open to new sponsorships, for example, name an auditorium after a big donor. We could also look at our existing debt service. Perhaps there's an opportunity to include similar projects there too. Approximately 85% of the budget is allocated to salaries. That means only 15% is left for programs. Our community has rallied together, and I want to support those partnerships with the Ed Foundation and the PTO. And finally, we have to continuously communicate with the community regarding these states, these steps, excuse me, as it is a matter of utmost concern to many. We need to communicate, communicate, and then communicate some more. At the end, we need to be proactive in our planning to ensure the same excellent quality of education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Agnes. Thank you, everybody, for being part of this event because you took your time to do this. So thank you so much. Sarah?
Thank you to our candidates and to all the Milburn residents who registered to attend the forum. We hope that you have found it informative. I know I have. A recording of this event will be available through both organizations, through West Hobart and South Mountain Civic. It's a challenge to put together a virtual town meeting, but this is the second time that our two associations have worked together to co-sponsor two very successful civic events. Thank you to Jorge, thank you to Merrily, Respec, and Mark Stahl for their work in creating this event. I think we all understand this is a very competitive and important election. And all of us encourage all of you to vote. Thank you.